The chair, though. Okay. All right, so this is our quarter committee. It is four seventeen and we could get it started. I'll hand it off to you, Myra.
Good afternoon, evening.
It's afternoon.
Board members, Ms. Avedra, everyone who's here, thank you for being here tonight. I'm Myra Martinez, the Chief Internal Auditor for the school district. We have three items on the agenda today and I'll try to be brief so we can... The first item is on a... Based on a requirement from Board Policy CFC Local, and this requirement outlines that I annually I review with the board, internal audit organization, personnel assigned to the department, the Board Policy CFC Local itself, and the internal audit charter, as well as the proposed budget for next fiscal year. Because board oversight is essential to ensure that the overall... That to ensure the overall effectiveness of the internal audit department, reviewing these items with the board is really important so that you have the information you need to make sure that we're meeting your expectations and the mandate that you have for internal audit. So as we go through each of these items, I'll point out why I feel that it's important to cover them annually. So again, this is based on the requirements in Board Policy. Have to go up there. So the annually reviewing the organization of the internal audit is important because this is to ensure that the board understands or we're meeting your expectation to have that organizational independence that's needed to carry out the work that we need to do in an unbiased manner. Your internal audit department has organizational independence at EPISD for the reasons that are listed here on this slide, which includes that the Chief Internal Auditor reports both functionally and administratively to the Board of Trustees. Without approval from the board, internal audit can engage in activities that could compromise our objectivity or independence, and that typically is management duties. We can't set policies or procedures or monitor controls. Those duties belong to management. And also, only the board has the authority to approve that additional duties or responsibilities be added, assigned to the internal audit. And then to further ensure that we have that independence, the board has delegated the authority to determine job descriptions, hire and conduct evaluations to the Chief Internal Auditor for the individuals that are signed in the internal... To the internal audit department. And speaking of personnel, so this is an org chart of our department. We have... There's eight... A total of nine employees in the internal audit department, and that includes the executive assistant assigned to the department, Melissa Garcia, who just joined our department in February of this year. The remaining individuals, we've been in place and the positions have been filled. We had a vacancy back in the summer, but we filled it in August. You'll see at the top, it's... I have two supervisors, Mina and Ali, that are here with me also today, and they help me supervise all of the engagements in our audit plan. They do the day-to-day supervision to ensure that we're meeting the expectations and our standards and our own procedures that we have at our department level. We also have one IT auditor, Tony Alanis. He's right in the middle there, and Tony's here also. There's also two senior auditors, Liz and Julie, and then two internal auditors in the department. This year, I included a summary of the internal audit qualifications as part of Exhibit C in the audit plan. It was also included as an attachment for this item. And here, I provided a summary for the board that outlines for each individual that's assigned to internal audit, the years of service they have with EPISD, the years of experience they have as auditors, the education background for each individual, as well as the certifications. This slide just provides a summary of the overall qualifications for the department. I do have to make a correction on the number of auditors with relevant professional certifications. There are eight auditors in the department, but seven have the... Have a relevant professional certification, and that is about eighty-eight percent of the staff in internal audit. We have one individual who's not certified, but she is pursuing certifications and she's working through those. And so before I move on to the next topic, I know she doesn't want to come out on camera, but I did want to notify the board that we have another certified internal auditor in the department, and that is Mina Gómez, over there. She just completed the requirements for the certification. It's a three-part exam, and it is a challenging exam. There are not that many certified internal auditors in the school district setting, let me say that. The Institute of Internal Auditor, this is a globally recognized certification, so if you move out of the country, it goes with you. It's considered like the best of the best for internal auditors to have the certification. So I'm really proud of Mina for going through that, and I know that there's other members in my staff that also... Three others that are pursuing that certification as well.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Next slide, please. I am providing to the board the proposed budget for the internal audit department. This is an important piece for the board to also, you know, have an understanding because this lets you know that the resources that are being allocated to the internal audit department, and that will be used to implement the plan that's coming to you for approval this month. This is pretty similar to previous years' budgets with the exception of one item, which is for audit services. It's the... I think it's the fourth from the top, and it's for thirty thousand dollars, and it is quite a bit. But what internal audit has been... You know, I've been talking to the board during my evaluation for the last three years about having an external quality assessment of our department, just like we... Other audit departments, because we see the benefit in that. I see the benefit of my department also having that external independent review to make sure that we're aligned to the professional standards from the Institute of Internal Auditors, that we're meeting the board's mandate as outlined in the charter, and also to make recommendations on how we can continue to always improve our department. This is an estimate. I've reached out to other districts that had gone out for bids or requested information on how much it would cost. So it's an estimate. If it's less than that, whatever money I don't use, I will give back, I promise, Martha. I'm hoping it won't be more than that, but if it is, in that case, I will come back to the board and discuss that. Also, as we move forward with that process next year, I'll have a conversation with the audit committee if you want me to get quotes, to bid it out, or to just go with somebody that we would recommend because it... More than likely, it will be under the fifty thousand dollar threshold to go out for a bid. But I want to have that discussion with you as it gets closer. The rest of the items on the budget are similar to what we've done in the past, although if you go to the next slide... I've just... Like in prior years, I provided a breakdown of those costs that are going to exceed ten thousand dollars. Audit services, I mentioned, is the one new item. This is not going to be a reoccurring item every year. Best practices from the Institute of Internal Auditors say that we should get audited once every five years. So after this year, we won't see it again. That amount won't be there for the next five years. I budgeted money for equipment and software to include laptop replacement plan for our auditors, some software for analytics for... And also for... To help us with some of our writing, which we subscribe to Grammarly. The next slide. One item that you'll see there from year to year is the fraud, waste and abuse hotline. That's something that comes under our budget, even though it's an initiative that's really district-wide. And we've also... We've set a very healthy budget for training for the staff just because it's so important that our staff keep up with industry standards, with best practices for internal audit, as where as... As well as maybe not everybody has the certified internal auditor certification, but we do have a lot of other certifications like certified fraud examiner, certified government auditing professionals that require we have a certain number of CPEs anywhere from forty to twenty. Our IT auditor has two certifications that require sixty hours of training, so it's important that keep up with that training in order for us to keep our certification active.
So Myra, I guess I do have a question because you talked about budgeting for technology replacement. Is this department not on the general replacement cycle?
No, and Mr... Maybe Martha or Mr. Berdusko can speak to that, but I am not aware that departments are on a general replacement plan. I think every department's kind of doing their thing right now. I know for a few years back, we started with doing a three-year, but then we knew that we could expend the life... You know, the lifetime of our laptops, so we've gone to four years, but that's just for our department. And so then, so as you'll see, we have a pretty healthy budget for training. And then on the next slide, I wanted to provide a comparison of the current year's budget versus next year, what we're proposing, and you'll see the difference, although it's twenty-eight thousand. It's pretty much the amount that I'm asking for that external quality assessment right now. Next slide. Another topic I'm supposed to cover with the board annually is to go over our policy and our internal audit charter. And this is... These are very critical documents because these, one, ensure that we have the proper processes in internal audits, so we have independence, objectivity, that we have an audit plan, but also it formalizes the mandate from the board, your expectations of internal audit. You delegate the authority for us to have the authority we need in order to carry out our audits. So these two documents are really critical. The first one is the local policy. In this policy, the policy outlines the selection of the internal auditor, meaning that the board has the authority as a whole to hire and fire the internal auditor, to select the auditor. You determine the job description for the auditor. You have a requirement that the Chief Internal Auditor have the certified internal auditor certification or the certified government auditing professional certification. And for the department, you require that we follow the professional standards from the Institute of Internal Auditors, that the reporting expectations from the Chief Internal Auditor, that we have an annual audit plan, and of course, that every year we come back and revisit these topics with the board so that you make sure that we're meeting again the expectations outlined in policy and that we have the staff that you... We need to carry out our plan. I shared this policy and the exhibit with the audit members when I met with them to go over the audit plan. I... There was really no... I didn't have any recommendations to update the policy at this time, and I didn't get any... No board member said that they wanted any changes at this time. The next one is the charter. The charter defines our purpose, our mission, that we follow the standards that dictates that we do. It outlines our authority, our expectations for independence and objectivity. It defines the scope of work for our department. It outlines the specific responsibilities that, you know, I have as a Chief Internal Auditor. And finally, it outlines expectations for the reports, the issuing of the report, the posting of the report online, and then the expectation for corrective action plans from management. On this document, I am proposing some minor changes, and it's just one for clarification, just to mirror what we actually do. The first one is to change the word... The language from internal audit plan to just audit plan, because that's the language that we use, and there's eight instances of that. The second one is to remove business from the sentence. Review, audit, the expectation that I review and adjust the audit plan as necessary in response to changes in the district's business, risks, operations, programs, systems and controls. Typically, we just don't do business side of the house. We do the whole... You know, we do other areas of audit, so just to kind of not confuse it, I was... I'm suggesting to remove business. And then the last thing is just to clarify that audit engagements are executed, include the expectations from the standards. And I know we're back and forth, I met with Dr. Avedra on this, so the recommendation would be to just basically remove plan, and it would say, ensure audit engagements executed include this as outlined here. It would be... This charter cannot be approved without... It can only be approved by the board, changes, so I would have to work with Ms. Collins with these changes if you all are okay with that, and then bring it to the full board for approval. Very minor things.
Yeah, and the only thing was, it just didn't read well. So it was just easier to just make it more clear by. That's why we went back and forth.
So when we met Myra, it's... You fixed it since?
Yeah, since then, these are the small changes that I would propose. Any questions on this section? Then that's it for this one. If we can go to the next.
So Myra, you're going to bring the... This language change to the board in a future board meeting for their official approval?
Yes, ma'am. I want to go through SEZI just to make sure that I follow the right process, put it in the right format. And then I think she also shares with Tazby just to make sure that there's nothing that I guess that stands out too different or... Just for their review, and then it would come to the board for approval. So the next... Are we ready to move on to the next item? So the next item is the discussions about the proposed audit plan for next year, and I'll also be covering a little bit on the risk assessment process that I followed this year for developing the plan. The first slide, please, the next slide. So the standards from the Institute of Internal Auditors and even the board's expectations in the charter require that we establish a risk-based audit plan to determine the priorities of our... Of the internal audit department. But most importantly, having a systematic process like we do for creating an audit plan that ensures that we focus on the areas that have the greatest exposure to risk that could keep the district from meeting its goals and objectives is very important. So I think it's not just as auditors, we've always been trained to follow the risk, and that's what we do. That's what we do with our audit plan, and that's what we do with our individual engagements. But I think most importantly, as there's been so many conversations about the strategic blueprint for the district, internal audit also needs to align, you know, the work that we do so that we can add value to the district in that way, you know? We audit the areas where there's the greatest priority as outlined by the board and as agreed upon by the superintendent. So we've done that through this audit plan process. So move to the next one. So we've completed our risk assessment and leading to the development of the audit plan. Our audit plan process that we use ensures that the audit plan is risk-based, that we support the district's strategic blueprint, and that we align ourselves with the expectations of the board. Your internal audit department continues to evolve, and we align our... The work that we do to those priorities. And really, the blueprint for this year was front and center as we were developing this plan. And I've had discussions with my staff too because as we implement the plan that the board ultimately approves, even at that level, at the planning level for each audit, it will still continue to be the focus as we're developing our scope and objective and identifying the risks at the engagement level. We will always come back and refocus and keep that in mind as our priority. So as part of this process, I also met with the superintendent and the board... And board members to get feedback on the audit plan. The audit plan covers the period, as you know, it'll be next fiscal year, July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024, and it's been submitted as an item for the April 18th regular board meeting agenda. So during the January meeting, I went... Can you go back one more, Mina? During the January meeting, I went over the audit plan development process. I don't know that I want to revisit that, but I just do want to point out that during this process, we do not just reach out to Ms. Avedra, but we reach out to different levels of management. I got forty-four questionnaires from various levels of management, from the business side, operations, and the academic side. I also met with external auditors, the strategic and evaluation department, and even employee relations staff to discuss, you know, risks that they may have observed as they conduct their work because I think that information is important to make sure that we can better align our... We can better use our resources and not have duplicate efforts as we're doing that. But also, they help us identify risks that maybe we don't get to see as we're conducting some of our audits. That was really helpful. Ultimately, the process that we follow ensures that our audit is risk-based, that we generate buy-in from district leadership because we're talking to them even before we start the audit, even before we get it approved by the board, and of course, supports EPISD success and meets the board's mandate. So unless you have any questions, I'll move on to the next slide. So this slide includes the heat map and illustrates the risk rating for the thirty-four key auditable units that we identified during our risk assessment process. The number represents the department's budget unit. We identified four auditable units that were determined to be the highest risk in terms of likelihood and impact to the district if something were to go wrong, and six had the lowest risk, and then the nineteen remaining were in the middle with the medium risk. The audit plan itself includes the definition for each of the budget units, and it also includes the full results of the risk assessment by... For the whole audit universe by auditable unit. Next slide, please. As I said, an important step in determining, you know, what projects are going to make it to our plan is to make sure that we have the resources to implement the plan. And by resources, I mean, not only do we have the staff, but do they have the knowledge, skills and competencies to carry out some of these audits? If we don't, is it... Is there training that's available that can fill in those gaps? Do we have the money in our budget for that training? So we look at the staffing, the budget, and then also how we're going to implement it all based on like the schedule that we're going to have for our audit plan, so we assign the right auditors to the right engagements. We also identify the needs for technology as Ms. Avedra, as we said, you know, do we need... Is there certain staff members that are up for rotation or replacement plan for the laptops? Is there certain data analysis software that we need to look into or change? So all those things are considered as we're determining our resources. Next slide, please. I've covered the financial budget in the last presentation. This presentation includes the budgeted hours for the department, and we calculate those based on the workdays that are available for the eight-time fully equivalent... Full-time equivalent audit professionals. We also allocate hours for leave, professional development and administrative duties. And as indicated in Exhibit Five, seventy percent of our time will be allocated to projects and other activities that are either required or recommended by the Institute of Internal Auditors. The final step in the audit plan development process is to propose and solicit feedback. I met with leadership and executive cabinet-level administrators, with twelve of them, to review and discuss the results of the risk assessment and to get input and buy-in on the potential projects to include in the plan. And then I met with the superintendent, twice. Thank you, Ms. Avedra. She met with me before I met with the board and then after I met with the board just to discuss the changes that we had made as a result of those meetings. And then I met with board members also to discuss the potential projects and get feedback. And then I know we also had discussed some... You know, these are... These are the ones that we're proposing to include, and then these are some that we have to pick. So I was able to get feedback from all of you during that process. Thank you. So in summary, our audit plan includes fourteen engagements. Nine of those will be audits, and we'll have four corrective action plans and one consulting engagement. As you can see, most of our hours are going to be allocated to those audits. Cat follow-up reviews typically don't take as many hours as a full audit, so that's why you see that the numbers a lot... The number of hours is a lot less compared to the audits. The next slide. I also wanted to provide a breakdown of how we're... How our projects are supporting the strategic plan. Most of our projects are going to be under the Culture of Accountability lever. We have six projects tied to that. However, we do have projects tied to the other level levers, including one for the whole child development, four for academic excellence, three for destination district. The one lever that we didn't include, I think there could be components of an audit that could have... You know, we would identify risks related to equity, but one project dedicated to equity was not included because I know the board is planning to conduct... To have an external audit conducted of the... An equity audit, district-wide equity audit. So at this point, I figured not this year. We don't... We didn't include anything for this year, but it's something we can consider the subsequent years once we have the results of that audit. Any questions? Other activities in the plan, of course, administrative duties, employee leave, monitoring of the fraud, waste and abuse hotline, activities that are recommended or required by the standards that we follow, professional development for auditors, and then we also set aside contingency hours so that we can either support administration through consulting engagements. so that we can either support administration through consulting engagements, or we can also set aside hours in case concerns come up that we may need to investigate that either rise through the hotline or through other reporting mechanisms where we need to get involved. And I think the last two slides just provide the list. It's really the the list of the planned projects are included in the audit plan with the broad objectives, with the how they're tied to the strategic blueprint, and with the risk rating. For this purpose, I wanted to put it this way, so you could, for transparency purposes, see how we're not gonna audit all of the audit universe. There are some areas that we don't have the resources to do a full audit, but it's areas that we consider for the future. But the ones that we are auditing, I wanted to make sure that you could see what lever they were tied to. So in this slide, you'll see at the top the ones that are tied to the academic excellence and whole child development. The next slide includes, move on. At the bottom, you'll see the ones that are related to operations and IT. Gosh, I am so blind. And then the next ones are the fi- financial office, the administrative services, and the different areas. And business services, yes. I can't see this. I need my readers, my readers, it's so small. But so we I I divided it by group, by audit universe group. And I think pretty much it's what we had discussed during our meetings. I think with Ms. Seval, the only thing that might be new, 'cause I think I met with you early on, is to do a PMs audit. I think there was a, we could do a PMs component, like audit a PMs component as we audit discipline or attendance. But then after discussing with the superintendent and some board members, we just added a full-blown PMs audit or to audit the department and the processes. But other than that, I think everything's the same since we have discussion. There are a couple of areas that are high-risk according to the risk assessment. For example, with the procurement department. However, Ms. Ms. Aguirre said I could share this, is I think they're they're pursuing a management review from Tasbo for the department, so I think that would also address some of the risks there and help them, you know, in their operations. The other area is in operations for the facilities and construction department. We felt, after discussion, we felt that we're probably gonna have similar findings. I don't know if there'd be anything new coming up from us continuing to do the close-out audits, but we did set aside hours in consulting so that we can have discussions with the superintendent or with the deputy superintendent or the COO when he or she comes on board about, you know, risks that need to be considered for future projects. That's it, any questions?
I just really appreciate how you did everything to the levers that became up. So I just wanted to say that. It's nice to kinda see that in action, all the work that we put in, and now it's coming into our audit plan, so I think that's really cool.
And we're making a concerted effort for there to be a level of visibility with everything that we do and how that ties back to the strategic blueprint and how it's really bringing, you know, that, you know, strategic plan to life. So, you know, at at every level, so I think it's important, and I I agree, I concur. I really like the way it's kind of mapped out and it ties back to what's important to us as an organization.
And I think that's the the ineffective internal audit department will understand that just like Ms. Saavedra and her administration, everyone's making changes to align themselves to the priorities. We need to do the same so that we truly can add value and back to the district.
Yeah, and I I saw a lot of that throughout the year. I feel like every time we met with you, your wheels were spinning in your head, and you were really thinking about how you could make the department better. You were consistently, you know, explaining that to us, the ideas that you had, how you wanted to ramp up your department so that there was alignment, and then meeting with us individually to make sure that all of our concerns were addressed. So I I think this, you know, was an excellent audit plan. I was happy with last year's, but I think in general, your department is just doing really good things.
And Myra, for the sake of the public, did you say that, or did you mention today? Because we spoke about it, the S R audit.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Ms. Seval, that's a very valid point, and I think even Dr. Saavedra had asked me to bring this up, but I didn't. It's I I just wanted to inform the board, and we'll we'll talk about it when we talk to about the internal audit status report. But as far as roll-forward audits, the one audit that we will not be able to finish this year would be the will be the S R audit. So I have rolled it forward and included it in our next year's plan. Corrective action plans, of course, usually are as a result of the audits that we do this year and will be rolled forward next year, because that's just when they usually take place. But yes, the S R audit is the one that I've rolled forward from the current year to next year.
And then I think you mentioned too, it's because we're already gonna be audited.
Right, so I know that, I don't think T E A has given us the results, but we did receive notice in the fall, and we submitted documentation, the administration did, to T E A because they're auditing our department for the S R.
There's a, they've they've done, they've released, I guess, well, to us, but they're they're doing spot, you know, checks across the, so we were one of the lucky ones, so. Well, we'll see what comes out of that, and then there's, you know, just like we're initiating our own equity audit, well, this this audit is being initiated, it's more of a desk audit from T E A. And then if there's implications from that, that we need to continue to look more deeply, you know, to, you know, for in terms of risk management, then I guess my department will and kind of wait and see what the outcome of that is before we formalize that.
And I know she attended, she went to training at Region 19, where you all had a conversation about other districts getting the S R audit? And you said that none of them have received the results yet, right?
For more than four or five months.
For more than four or five months. So I think they're just, they're probably auditing everyone at the same time, and then they'll issue the reports at the same time. But I I mean, I I would hope we'd get them before the start of the new fiscal year so we can plan accordingly.
And then also too, in the world of accounting, I mean, what what we remember as a desk audit is not so much an audit, it's like a review. So it's not at that point where they really, really look at stuff, but rather just an overall monitoring visit.
Yeah, because, I mean, they don't necessarily come physically here. Physically come, then it's beyond a desk audit.
It's more of like, you spend this, do you have supporting documentation? And was this included in your application, the grant application?
So it's really a document.
Any questions though? Now move on to the last item on the agenda, which is the internal audit.
Report for quarter three.
So this covers the activity for internal audit from the beginning of the fiscal year through quarter three, which would be about the end of March. Next slide, please. So this one just kind of outlines the expectations, the responsibilities that I have according to the internal audit charter. And because of these expectations, I've included in the report the status of the audit plan through quarter three, the status of corrective action plans, and also a summary of the fraud, waste, and abuse hotline reports. Next slide, please. So as you know, the board approved the initial audit plan in April 2022, and you approved adjustments to the plan in November 2022. The approved audit plan included twenty planned projects, and we also set aside hours for, you know, some of those administrative items, employee leave, et cetera, same as last year, as next year's plan. During the year, we've so we've we've completed the dual-language audit, and we've received a corrective action plan from management, but the implementation dates begin at the end of June and then through next fiscal year. And because of that, we can't do a review, the 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 those activities haven't been completed. So that is one cap that we're still gonna include in next year's plan, but that means that there's nothing to do for that cap this year. So we've removed that from the plan, and we've also completed a investigation under the contingency category. So we've added that to the plan. And ours, as a result of that investigation, management developed a cap corrective action plan, so we also added that to the plan. So in summary, we went from twenty planned projects to twenty-one planned projects since the last meeting that we had. The next slide, please. So as of March 27th, when I submitted this report, we had completed through the reporting phase forty-eight percent or ten of the twenty-one projects in the audit plan. Nine of the projects are in progress, and we have not started working on two projects. And if we go to the next slide, I can provide additional information on that. So for reporting purposes, I've grouped projects into group one and group two. Group one includes the audits, consulting, and contingency projects. There are, there are out of tho- out of a, those are listed right here on the slide for you. So that's a total of eleven projects. Out of those, we've completed six, and we through the reporting phase, and we have four in the field work phase. We expect that those four will be completed by the end of the year. But as you mentioned, Ms. Seval, that last one, the S R audit, will be the one that we rolled forward to next year's plan. And the next slide, please. This one just provides the status of the projects that we're working on, and you can see the the bottom are the ones that are in the field work base. And the next slide. So the second group of category of of projects that we have in our audit plan are the corrective action plan follow-up reviews. We have four that we've completed, five that are in progress, and one that we have not started. The one that we have not started, it's the transcript audit, we're still working on the audit. So I do also expect that this is one that we probably won't get to do a review on it this year. It'll go to next year, but it's still, we'll wait, see if there's even any findings to do. So if there are no findings, then there would be no cap to follow up on. The top four have been implemented. The ones that are in progress are those that have activities to be implemented this fiscal year. So I do expect those that are in progress to be completed this year before the end of the fiscal year, as long as we don't have acceptance or other changes in priorities. Next slide just provides, as I do every year, a reminder of the corrective action plan process. If we can go to the next one. This slide, this slide provides the six corrective action plans that are currently open and in the implementation phase. At the th- the time of our report, one corrective action plan had passed due activities, and I'll elaborate on that as we move forward. Next slide. This provides the completion percentage by corrective action plan. As I said, those four that are in the implementation phase, I we do expect, based on the timelines, that they will get implemented this year and will get to do our follow-up review. The one for, the the second one, twenty-two point two one, that's the investigation cap. And I know that since I submitted the report, some activities have been implemented, and we've gotten assurance from administration that the remaining ones will also be implemented. The twenty-two point oh nine, that's the dual-language audit, the dual-language audit cap, and that one is the one that's gonna be rolled forward next year. This slide provides the status of the activities for the corrective action plans that are open. One of the corrective action plans, the twenty-two dot thirteen, is a procurement cap, and it has five activities that are past due. At the time of our report, we're waiting for the extension, but we received it, we received the extension since then. So we will be updating the due dates for those five activities. They will still be done, based on the extension, they will still be done this fiscal year, I believe, through May. So we will still have still have an opportunity to do our follow-up review.
Did you receive those, the extension requests after they were due?
Yes, they were due in January, the end of January.
And you got them recently, I'm assuming? Something I'd like to see worked into the process of as we approach the cap timeline. We look and evaluate if there needs to be an extension instead of that extension being requested months after the fact.
The extension was reasoning.
Oh, and if you can go to the next slide, please. I think it's in there, it's coming, it's coming. And then this last, the next slide just provides the due dates for the open caps, for the open cap activities. And you'll see here that some are past due, we have some that are due within the next thirty, sixty, ninety days, and then some that are due after that. And then the next slide just provide additional information on the five activities that have been delayed that are in progress. Dr. Vialva's also here, I believe, so that if you want him to talk to you about the extension, I know they were waiting, one of them entails a working with the analytics team to develop a dashboard, so they were working through that, and some of the ones entail changing the activities a bit, a bit related to reviewing the discounts. So if you have any questions.
Trustee?
Provide some updates or responsive questions.
If you have any questions.
Trustee, is a question for you for your extension? Is that the the department that's had new personnel, a lot of new personnel?
Well, procurement, I think you're thinking of I about IT, maybe?
Technology. However, as I, well, this.
If someone wants to speak to why why they were extending, I appreciate that, it'd be helpful to understand.
I would say that you you will be receiving a board update that gives you an update on the conversation about vacancies with IT, so.
You can join us.
So as we review the the cap where we for the cooperative contracts, so we've been evaluating this, as you're aware, Mr. Dr. Vialva joined us in July, so he's almost a year old. But there's been a lot of review and assessment of the various audits that have been in place and where we thought that the activities that were initially proposed for the audit, the cap, would be aligned, we're finding that there's there's probably a need to redirect some of our processes. We've also contracted with Tasbo, Texas Association of School Business Officials, to support us in in helping us maybe consider some of our options as far as how we can restructure or better utilize the team we currently have to enhance some of our processes.
So so what I hear you saying is that in some cases, there were cap activities that were offered that may not be serving the intended purpose. So there was a reevaluation of that, and then contracting with Tasbo so that we could get more consultation and more specificity, so that if we're gonna engage in cap activities, that we're not just doing it to check the box, but they're actually activities that are gonna initiate a shift in practice so that we can address the issues that were found in the audit.
So Myra, in a situation like that, where the cap that was provided may not fit the need of what, say, the department's looking at, is there a classification that we can look at that's other than past due versus?
I think I think we can, we can have those conversations. I think what we can do is inform, so if if things change, it's okay to amend some cap activities. And I think what happened here is just that there were some conversations, but we probably should have had those before January, before it was due, so we could revisit the timelines and why some of these things wouldn't work. 'Cause I know even with the discounts, we kind of went back and forth as to, and I think this was me, but as to whether it's gonna be the responsibility of the receiver, of the individuals entering the requisitions, or if it's gonna be the procurement department. So I think also because I think when Dr. Vialva came, the cap had just been developed and approved. So I think at that point, we had discussed, well, do you wanna change anything? But I think he was just starting to get settled in. Too soon to know, so I think having that conversation before the due date so that we can talk about adjustments, we can prevent this, like for it to be reported as past due.
I'll give you an example, though. Myra also meets with me that, like, for example, there was conversation about one of the dual-language, you know, caps, or, you know, the the activities listed on the dual-language cap. And I talked to to Myra about it, and I said, well, I said, I see all these activities, and I see these due dates. Has anybody gone back to the superintendent's evaluation? Because there are some things on these activity lists that are that are apparent in my superintendent's evaluation. Do these activities and the deadlines match what the expectation is for how that's reflected in my superintendent's evaluation? And so that was a proactive, you know, conversation where there was an ability to go back and just make sure, are those activities on point? Secondly, are the due dates within the range that I would expect them, right? Rather than just listed as separate activities. So sometimes, we've gotta think about these caps in terms of other cogs on the wheel, because it's not necessarily something that's always in isolation, 'cause there may be an impact of the cap and deadlines for the cap on other business that we do as a school district.
Agreed, I just, I'm with Myra, I'd like to have those conversations and plans in place before, three months after. Agreed, I just, I'm with Myra, I'd like to have those conversations and plans in place before, three months after the due, the due date. I think that that's, also gives us an opportunity, well, as we look towards the audit, look towards what's being fixed and addressed, then the board can either support if needed or whatever may need to happen subsequently. I don't, I think this board has made it very clear that as long as it's necessary and the cap is being requested and for necessary reasons, timely, we don't have a problem with that because we want it to be.
But not after the fact.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Like, I think it does help, like, having the meetings with the superintendent or with the deputies or with the chiefs to have that conversation, you know, as, as we go along. And now that we have timelines, whether it's in the Ms. Ayvedra's evaluation document or even in just the strategic plan and as we see kind of how things are going to evolve. My staff also has that document with the key targets. They keep a hard copy in their, in their desk because we've been having that conversation so much in the last, since we started this audit plan. And I said, okay, so when, as we're looking, even in we issue audit findings, let's look at the dates too. Because when we're having our exit meeting, maybe it's not a bad idea to have that conversation and say, does it align with the priorities of the district? So we'll also can, you know, make sure that we're also leading the conversation as we're having the exit meetings to discuss the, the cap, the, the cap and cap development.
Because I do think it'll work its way out. I mean, obviously, we had a big transition of key positions. So coming in, in the first six months and having to tackle those caps, obviously not the, the most conducive environment to success. So I think as we kind of were stabiling, stabilizing the district, stabilizing these key positions, this is probably out of the norm. So understood as, as well.
I, I guess my, my question overall is, your department, I assume, is monitoring these caps like, oh, it's January thirty-first, Mirdna messaged somebody, I assume, right?
Yeah, we have automated reminders in the software that we use, Smartsheet. Only my IT auditor's here, but I think even Athletics reached out to us last week and said, I'm tired of your reminders because they're automatic. And as it gets closer to the due date, I think they're getting like three a week, three a week. So we're sending them, you know, on a regular basis. If they're reading them, that's a different story, but yeah, the expectation is that, you know.
Myra will come to me and say, I'll tell you her response, so.
But, but I assume, like, all these months could pass by, right? And maybe there's, their automated emails are just not, they're just like, oh, it's an automated, like, I, I have five emails telling me to do a training and I've been getting them for the past few days. So I, and I haven't done the training, but, but I'm, I'm wondering in the sense of maybe a more personal email to the person from your department to say, hey, your cap is overdue now. Is that happening or how can?
My staff, Corle's, is, is like, she has, she's the one that I feel like, I like, I call them and I, and sometimes I say, okay, email's not working, let's set up a meeting with them, you know, or let's reach out through phone call so we can try to coordinate. Because I don't want to wait until I'm at the audit committee meeting. And then if needed, you know, I'll, to Martha and then the superintendent. So we're just trying to.
But even those personalized things are going unanswered sometimes?
At times.
Yeah, so what can we do, like, as superintendent? Like, obviously, you're meeting with the superintendent, I assume you go and tell the superintendent. But I guess to tell people, like, when you get an email, you know, can you answer or communicate?
Well, I mean, I think that that's also, as we're continuing to develop as a leader, senior leadership team. Those are the things that, you know, you're, you're working to, to make sure that don't go, you know, by the wayside. I think it's a, it's a work in progress. I do believe that if I remember this time last year, or maybe at the beginning in the fall of this year, we updated the protocols for even requesting.
Right.
An extension. So again, we're, it's an evolving situation. I think we're getting better. We're not at optimum operation at this point in terms of, you know, all the caps. But I do anticipate that it's going to improve over time, so.
I agree, no, I do.
I, I just don't want people to be like, oh, well, they didn't answer the email, let's set up a meeting. Or, you know, like, I, I just feel like it's just a, a routine thing that, just communication with one another. Even if it's like, hey, I'm busy right now, I'll get to you on Monday or whatever it is, right? Just that two-way communication, I think, is really important.
Because it optimizes your time as well.
It does because you have to keep in mind, like, delays affect my plan, just like we've talked about it. If there's a delay, we already had those hours reserved for a current project. So now we have to move those hours towards this as well and we have to balance. Or sometimes we have to roll it over to the next year. So it does affect other projects because it's not like we haven't been able to not do anything with that one. We're still continuing to follow up and reach out, but it does, it's, it can be time-consuming.
Well, and, and if, if, I mean, if I may, you know, I, I want the board to understand that there's, there, I, I don't think that there's an intent to impact or delay, you know, the work. But when you think about the scope of responsibility for, you know, each one of the senior leadership members, although, you know, the audit piece is very important, that along with, you know, ten or fifteen, you know, other things are, are on, you know, their list of, of things to do. But like I said, I think that we're, you know, continuing to get better. And, you know, we, we have very open, you know, conversations of accountability in our senior leadership meetings. Again, I meet on, I, I would say at least once a month, if not twice, sometimes with, with Myra. So I do think that we have the controls in place. It's just, you know, making sure that we consistently prioritize when we need to take corrective action. And then lastly, I would say that we, we're constantly working to build capacity. And in some cases, it may be not that there's an intent to delay, but there may be.
Competing priorities or other.
Not competing priorities, but I don't know what to do, right? Or I might not understand what activities I would put in a cap that would really resolve this issue, you know? And, and so really just working with staff to just share when they're at a loss so that we can provide the necessary support so that we can get from point A to point B.
I would, I would say that's probably Dr. Osorio's major, a nice major theme is more the communication aspect. If it's missed, it's missed. I mean, that, that's what it is. If there's a reason and there's a process that we need to improve or whatever it may be, that communication piece is what, what we're really, I think, asking for just so that we optimize not only Myra's teams, but then also your team's time as well. Because this is just as much time on y'all as it is on her to get these caps done and in place and things of that nature. If it doesn't make sense, then that might be a part of that process that Myra's talking about as we look towards that independent auditor that comes in to help us maximize performance or maximize our best practices so it's not as mundane or repetitive, redundant, if it's not even necessary. So I, I think that's more, was the flexibility component.
Okay, all right. The last piece of the, of the activity reports includes a summary of the fraud, waste, and abuse hotline reports. Just, I won't get into the weeds here, I provide the, the, the information for you all just overall. Between July first, twenty-twenty-two and March twenty, twenty-twenty-three, we've received a hundred and twenty-seven reports for thirty-seven different locations. Ninety-seven percent of those reports have been anonymous. I also think it's important to tell the board, if you can go back to the last one, that forty-one of the reports that we've received were duplicates, the same issue being reported. There are some instances where we get the same report. I think there was a week in February where we got the same report five times, almost written exactly the same. So we are still having issues where it's this duplicate item or it's, it's a, something that really shouldn't be reported through the hotline, like it's a comment or, or, you know, general suggestion. So we're monitoring those and we'll be tracking those because I think that kind of skews the number that we have. I don't think this is, the num, the number, one twenty-seven, really isn't an accurate number of the complaints that have been reported through the hotline. As I said, forty-one were duplicate and then also twenty reports were really more comments and suggestions. So realistically, that would bring it back down to about sixty-six unique concerns reported through the hotline.
Well, and then the other thing that I shared with Myra is that as you, as we've progressively opened for business, you know, from being completely shut down from the pandemic to where we are today, I think that you're seeing, you know, business, you know, get back to, you know, functioning on all cylinders in full capacity. Just like you might see over, if you looked at the same timeline, you might see an increase in discipline in, in a, in a school district because everybody's back. And, you know, there's, you know, some of the behaviors that we saw pre-pandemic are starting to seep back into the landscape. So I think that this is evidence of, of, of similar trends there.
And then on the next slide, we provide just that we've closed a hundred and thirteen of those reports. The rest are in progress or, or still pending a response. The next slide provides the outcome. And here, we're showing that four percent of the concerns were substantiated and that represents five reports. And then the next slide provides a summary by category. As I said, there's a lot of reports that are, that are submitted through the hotline that aren't really fraud, waste, or abuse. Those are screened through our department, but ultimately, most of those are sent to management to follow up on those concerns and respond. And then the last slide just breaks it down by location type.
I, I remember last audit committee meeting, we were talking about trying to get something in place so everybody's not just going to the fraud hotline. And we could, like, I don't know, like a better website to get direction for people to not say, come here.
Well, we've been, we have been working with Liza's team and I know they, they, last, actually, last audit committee meeting, I did provide kinds of screenshots that they had shared with me on what the site would look like. Yes, ma'am.
So let me kind of respond to that. So we, as a matter of fact, on, at our senior leadership team meeting on Monday, we went through an initial training slash launch using a, a, a different platform, right? It's called K-12 Insight, which would be more appropriate for some of the things that Myra said are currently being reported through the hot, the fraud hotline. Because they're comments, they're suggestions, they're opinions, right? Which, as we work with K-12 Insight to improve our customer service and have layers of training and provide a venue and an option for us to, to, to have ongoing, you know, solicited feedback from the public, that platform should shift some of that activity over, right? But at the end of the day, there are some individuals that are going to insist on using this because of the word fraud and anonymous on there, so.
And, and Liza's team has been working on revamping the website so that we provide, educate our, the individuals that are reporting through the hotline. It, you know, if they want to file a complaint related to, say, more on the HR side employee relations, then there's links that will take them to the policy. I've also asked Liza, Liza's team to include links to K-12. And then when it truly is something that's, it provides the definition of fraud, waste, and abuse for them. So when it truly is that, then it will actually take them to the website, but it makes them kind of go through the process. I know as of last week, they were still working on it, they were going to try to finalize it. But I checked this morning, it's not up yet, but I, I, I imagine it'll be up, so.
And then, again, there's some, some specific, I mean, we've had quick K-12 Insight as a resource that we've been using, but we haven't maximized the use of that. And, and we will be maximizing that. So it's, it's reconditioning the public. But as you said, we're going to, you know, create a link that takes them directly there. But a big part of K-12 Insight is not necessarily just allowing the public to report in. It's the response time of when they get, you know, a response from whatever they've submitted. And so working to improve that. So more to come with that issue. So I think it's a combination of the website being launched and then our use and maximizing K-12 Insight to kind of shift people over.
It's also so in, in that way that the community gets a response timely, accurately, and their question or concern goes to the correct party. So just that, as I said, just educating and informing and, and, and as we're developing this customer service with K-12, every department will have, and we're going to be, like, for academics, we're going to have transcripts, report cards, really try to help the community streamline where their question should go so they get the academic kind of response.
So do you have an idea of when we could at least a soft launch or?
We're hoping to launch, the training will start this summer, so the goal is to launch all the sites before the new school year.
Right, in other words, we, we are going to use that platform and there's going to be analytics that come with that that allow us to show us how we're moving the needle in certain areas. So again, it's indirectly tied to really working with the community to provide them with a venue where, you know, they can share opinions, they can share thoughts, you know, with a response. But it's not necessarily going to be through the fraud and or, you know.
And then integrating some of our systems, which is what we're also trying to work with. So when we get a question, let's say, I don't know about a bus route or a meal, or we're training our, our staff and then integrating our systems, so more information comes out about that parent. So parents asking about this one child, but on the response, you're going to have something that shows, well, they're a parent to these other five children in these campuses and these are the bus routes. So when we respond, we're, we're, you know, we're making it personal and we can cut the time and the information that they're looking for.
And I, I think Liza's team is working on, at least on the fraud, waste, and abuse hotline to finish that up so it could be, at least that.
That launch will happen much more immediately in terms of what's on the website versus the, the launch of the, the K-12 Insight, which, as Liza said, we're going to be engaged in training at several areas of the organization for launch so you can see the impact and the use for the next school year, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Who's going to curate the K-12 incoming messages?
Well, there's ways to assign to specific, so it's not any one person.
It'll be based on issue?
Yeah, it's very, it's a very complex system that we're creating in terms of layers. That's why it's department-specific, there might be specifics put to the department that are assigned and it'll automatically route that to that person. There's expectations in terms of the turnaround time to reduce the number of days it takes for somebody to get a response. And then we would see reports, anyone who's responsible for responding for a given area that's been assigned to them, we can see those, right?
And I'm sure that's based on the user interface, so if I think it's under academics, I'll click academics and that's who it's routed to?
Yeah.
Got it.
Instead of the hotline which goes through a third-party vendor and then it comes to internal audit and then we determine who to send it to. So that should cut down the time and it'll go directly to the person that can answer the question. Comment.
Yep.
K-12. And that's all I have. If you have any questions regarding the.
I don't have a question, but I, I'm thinking for contingencies that your need, that you say for some reason cap is delayed or needed to be extended or whatever, do you have enough room on your staff? I mean, you, you addressed it, but do you recommend maybe adding somebody? I don't know if our budget could afford it, but that would help you or are you taking on enough where you think you're, you're comfortable with your staff?
Well, the audit plan is based on the resources that we have. So if, if the board wants us to take more projects on, then I, I would need more resources. As far as planning for the future, you know, I, I'm not going to be here forever, I don't think. So if we want some succession planning, I can have that conversation with the board, maybe during my evaluation time. Because I think, just like the rest of the district, you know, we, we want to make sure that if there is a transition, that there's somebody in place. Because right now, Adeli and Mirdna, for example, are the next, you know, the supervisors of the department and they're way too busy, they're supervising the day-to-day engagements. So as far as understanding or being able to develop the audit plan, to attend meetings, to understand everything that I do, we don't have anybody that has that knowledge right now.
Well, but I would also share that in response to, I mean, I agree with, with, with Myra in terms of succession planning, that might be a conversation. But I would also share that conducting more audits doesn't necessarily lead to a more efficient organization because with every audit comes a level of response and a level shift. And there's only so much that can be juggled if you're going to really impact the findings of an audit and, and again, engage in a quality corrective action plan that's actually going to lead to addressing the findings.
Right.
So, so yeah, I mean, that would just be my comment. More audits doesn't necessarily lead to a more efficient organization.
I completely agree. I think we need to be strategic. I completely agree. I think we need to be strategic on how we select our projects and make sure that we're aligning to the expectations and that there's enough time for them or administration to implement a proper corrective action.
Right.
So as far as for the projects that we have in our plan, I feel we have the resources for next year, which is different from the succession plan.
No, I'm just speaking of, of changes or contingencies that you might need. That's what I'm talking about.
Right.
A cushion of some sort.
We kind of have to find a balance with that too, because there are times where we can take something on and there's times where I may go too ready. And actually, Ms. Ayveda has been wonderful because there's been instances where I think it's even gone to outside counsel to kind of find a balance on how to address if concerns. But we've been working through it so far.
And I, I think something that we need to continue talking about, and we started doing this last year, is there's been staffing changes that have happened in Myra's department. And some of the stuff that we should consider is trying to do some retention, especially when you're getting a lot of people getting certified audits and, you know, competing with other entities. And so I think as we're going through the budget cycle, I think we need to consider that as well to make sure that people that have been within Myra's department are being acknowledged with salary and being competitive. Because we've seen it with IT, it's really hard to find people to come in, and it's going to be the same thing with Myra. There's other entities that are poaching people from her department because they're so great. So it's a conversation we need to continue having. Anything else, Myra?
That's all I have.
Well, we could adjourn the audit committee at five-twenty-three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.